Today, December 3rd, 2019, the Board of Trustees of Corrine Township convened for this special meeting of the Board of Trustees. Welcome, everyone present in this meeting. Let's raise and...
Shall I call the roll?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rinsko?
Present.
Mr. Rajagopal?
Aye.
And Mr. Unger?
Here.
So, let's stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's stand, remain stand, let's have a meditation. Let's think in our heart, the police officers who did a bravery job in protecting our children, the Northwest School shooting incident, and outside Northwest School incidents. We think about the safety of our children, safety of the police officers. Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Stand. We have a public hearing, a permissive, the fee of public hearing, they consider a $5 permissive license fee per ORC 4504.181. And...
I motion that we would...
We have a motion to have such hearing.
If you don't mind, I'll give just a brief summary of the issue, and then I think Mr. Solman will swear everyone in that wants to give testimony tonight at the public hearing, and then you would open up the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, and this evening, there's no deliberation, there's no vote. It's, I'll go over this in just a minute, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Solman.
Does that sound good?
Okay, good.
Very good. So, this past summer, the state of Ohio adopted House Bill 62, which became effective July 3rd, 2019. Under this bill, a new section of Ohio Revised Code was created, as you mentioned, Mr. Rajagopal is 4504.18. This section of Ohio Revised Code permits townships to raise an additional $5 permissive auto license fee. This fee is paid by all township residents on an annual basis when they renew their tags for their vehicles. In order to establish the $5 permissive auto license fee, a resolution must be adopted by the Board of Trustees after two separate public hearings, and these hearings are required to take place within 10 days of each other by the law, and that's why we're having this special meeting here tonight. Let's see, if adopted, the new revenue that would be generated would be used by the township to maintain roads. It would allow the township to even build new sidewalks if we so desired. You know, the state of affairs in our roads frankly is dire, and I worry about it. The average pavement condition index, it's called the PCI score, of our pavements in Corrine Township right now is 59.5. That's out of a, that's on a scale all the way to 100. If we want our PCI to remain close to this level in 30 years, that's just remain at about 55 PCI, we need to spend about $4 million a year on resurfacing. Currently, we spend $1.25 million a year. So, if over the next 30 years, we continue our current rate of spending, the result is that our, the average road condition will be quote-unquote "serious," it's called "serious," and the average PCI score would be 18.75, with many roads in the category of failed. So, it is a very real situation that we face. We also have heard from our partners at Northwest Local School District, and in our town hall meetings, a desire, a strong desire, for the construction of new sidewalks. If this permissive license fee were to be approved, funds that were generated from this fee would then be used for road resurfacing, which would free up money from the general fund, which is how we're right now spending, which is where we're paying for our road resurfacing money. Our road resurfacing money currently comes from the general fund, that is to say. So, we could, it would free up money from the general fund to build new sidewalks. The township, in my opinion, should take a hard look at every opportunity to ensure that our road network is properly maintained. The passage of this permissive license fee would put us one step closer to being able to provide this basic service for our residents. In 2018, the township had a total of 65,169 registered vehicles. The additional $5 license fee would generate roughly $325,845. Given the lag time that's associated with implementing this fee, the earliest that the revenue could be collected by the township is 2021. Roughly speaking, this revenue would allow the township to pave an additional .4 to .5 miles of road each year, if it was all used just for resurfacing. From the conversations with, from my conversations with other local township administrators, it appears that most, if not all, of our peer townships are looking at implementing this fee. So, with that as prelude, I think probably a good idea to, yeah.
Anyone who is going to provide testimony, if you could please stand up and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you, God.
I do.
All right, thanks so much.
I...
I would motion that we open the public hearing that Mr. Mills has described.
I second it. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rinsko?
Aye.
Mr. Rajagopal?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to draw the list.
Not everybody signed in, Raj.
Who?
Not everybody signed in. There were a few people that...
I got three people signed in, but you're welcome to sign, talk, if you want to come and address, and Mr. Solman will be swearing in. Okay, Mr. Mike Flam.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Regarding the repaving of the roadways, I think the idea of paving our roadways, I recognize that we're in a very serious, dire condition. However, be quite frank, I'm taxed hard as it is. Another $5 on the driver's license fees, can you reduce my property value by, or property taxes by $5, and then I'd be more than happy to do that. This, to me, is just the money that you're going to raise, and you can correct me on the numbers, but I believe you said you spent something about 1.5 million?
1.25.
1.25 million annually, and the extra tax is simply going to add an extra $300,000 to this, so we can pave up to another half mile of roadway. I don't, I don't see how this is going to save Corrine Township. This little bit, this little percentage of funds, I just don't see how it's going to save Corrine Township's infrastructure, roadway, and like you said, that's only assuming that everything gets spent on repaving. We already said that Northwest wants us to redo the sidewalks. I'd love to have a sidewalk in front of my house, I know it's not going to happen. I don't see how the extra $5 is going to benefit anyone. I pay over $8,000 a year in property taxes. $8,000, that's my choice, however, that is an exorbitant amount of money. The extra $5, is it going to break my bank? No. Are there people out there that it will, though? Yes. We know currently, people have trouble getting their license plates renewed because of the cost. We see it all the time within law enforcement, how many expired plates are out there. People can't afford to do it. People like myself, yeah, I can probably afford the extra $5. We have a whole list of people in society that can't afford this. They're not here tonight, no one's speaking on their behalf. They can't afford this. They're struggling to make ends meet. The extra $5 is going to make a difference to a lot of people. We're not taking that into consideration. I appreciate that the ORC 4504.181 allows us the opportunity to do this, it doesn't mean we have to do this. It just means we have the opportunity. The benefit of an extra $300,000, it's just not there. If you want to, if you want to go to Hamilton County and say, "We're going to refund you your $5, and we're going to reapportion it to something else like roadways," I'm all for it. I want to see the money come back, though. I don't live on a Corrine Township roadway, I live on Kemper Road. I just saw my roadway repaved this past fall, and it's the first time in 13 years. I don't expect, I didn't expect, and I still don't expect you to maintain it because it's a county road. There are other options out there, we need to find them besides raising taxes. Thank you.
Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name's Mike Flam, my address is 3120 West Kemper Road, and it's just west of Pitten Road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next, Kathy, please.
Kathy Moore, 11986 Walden Drive. I am against this tax. We are currently already paying $25 additional, and I don't think the township needs another $5. If they had another $5, they'd probably get wasted on something else. But just to be clear, this tax can only be used for roads, correct? Road repair, bridges, viaducts, whatever, that is what this is about.
It's spelled out for the purposes, it's spelled out in the statute.
Right, and it says nothing about sidewalks.
Mr. Mills didn't say...
I, that would release up other money. And with the condition that you say our roads are in, and how much repair they're going to need, I don't think that we should say, "We'll take this money for the sidewalks." We're going to need all the money we can get for the roads that we need to repair. And yes, we could free up township general fund dollars to do sidewalks, but we could also free it up to give pony rides. This is for the roads, and we give enough to roads, in my opinion, that we should not have an additional tax. Like I said, $25 every year is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stephanie Wright, please.
Stephanie Wright, 3729 Blue Rock Road. I am here this evening opposing the $5 license plate tax that the township is thinking about putting on our residents. Not too long ago, we had an election where some of our seated trustees made a promise to their residents, no new taxes. $5 on a license plate is a new tax to me. The timeframe for this, we've been collecting this fee from, I believe, since before 2009. The residents of Corrine Township have had an additional fee on their license. I was wondering where that money has been squandered away to in the past, and why was it not used appropriately then, and how can we be so sure that this additional $5 that we have to cough up now will be used appropriately? This is per car, not per household. Mr. Mills stated how many registered vehicles there are in Corrine Township. I believe this also would cover motorcycles, campers, and anything else like that that has a license plate on it. So, not, a lot of homes have three or four cars, a camper, a boat, motorcycle, that adds up to an individual residence. And I just say that I would, I'm not in favor of this, and I think the Board of Trustees should think hard and hard about this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this is the list I have.
Well, that, you didn't need to sign in. Lori McMullin was the last one.
Okay, anyone?
Sworn in. How you doing, Lori?
Hi. So, Lori McMullin, 10057 Menominee. So, I think I'm the lone person in this group to speak in favor of the tax. It's no secret that I'm a member of a volunteer group that's trying to revitalize our neighborhoods and community. If adopted, this could free up funds that could be used for road maintenance currently, but reallocated to other projects that we could use throughout our community. Sidewalks during the town hall meetings was probably the number-one thing that all of the residents were asking for, and I had a daughter that walked every day from Northwest home, and I can't tell you how many times she was almost hit by a car in that area. So, if we could save one kid, I'm willing to pay $10 a year for the two cars that I own. So, I'm just asking for your support on this. Building strong neighborhoods is the foundation of having a strong community. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Anyone else willing to come forward?
Hi.
Go ahead.
When was this originally?
Would you step forward? So, you are still under the oath, so you okay?
What year did we start receiving this additional permissive motor vehicle tax? Do you know?
I do not.
You don't know? Do you know when the last time the tax was raised?
You told me the license plate?
Yes. I mean, was it five years ago?
I thought Hamilton County put $5 on a couple of years ago to be dedicated to the Western Hills Viaduct, but I'd have to go back and double-check that.
Okay. Does anybody have any idea?
I don't know about the Corrine...
Can I, can I check and get back with you?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll call the BMB and get back with you. Thank you. If anyone else coming forward, then I will conclude the public. Go ahead, come on, ma'am.
Well, you need to be sworn in first.
Please, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christine Freiberg, I reside at 6613 Thompson Road.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so you got?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am going to come in and say I'm also opposed to the tax. Once again, I'm supporting what everybody, most everybody else has come. We just passed a levy, we're paying through the nose on our property taxes, and as Stephanie pointed out, it's not just a vehicle, it can be campers, motorcycles, and other recreational vehicles apply too, anything with a plate. If you boat, you're going to have to pay for this too. I do not see any value in getting, having this tax pass, because this past couple of years, I've seen a lot of spending or outsourcing, and as, you know, so in my opinion, because we're spending more money on my taxes, which means there's less I got to spend in my household that I like to spend to help the economy, and I think as leaders of this township, we need to rein in some of that spending too as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If anyone else not coming forward, I will ask the board to close the hearing.
I motion that we would close the public hearing.
I'll off for a second.
Okay, any discussions?
Not for me.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Rinsko?
Aye.
Mr. Rajagopal?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
So, the meeting is the special...
Motion for adjournment.
We got a motion for adjournment.
I would motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll let Raj make a second.
I second it. Any discussions?
Not for me.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Rinsko?
Aye.
Mr. Rajagopal?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming for the public hearing.
We call to order the special session of the Corrine Township Zoning Commission for December 3rd, 2019. It's approximately 6:00 PM, and if everybody could stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to everyone this evening. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Here.
Ms. McMullin?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westphal?
Mr. Grody?
Here. Before we proceed, if everybody would please turn off their electronic devices and telephones and whatever other gizmos you might have, we would appreciate it. This time, I introduce the township's legal counsel, Mr. Scott Solman, who will make our presentation this evening.
First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for obviously taking additional time out of their schedule to make tonight's meeting. As you are all aware, on November 19th, at the last zoning commission meeting, there was a vote of denial with respect to the request of MI Homes Kemper Florida Holdings in regards to turning the R4 and R6 residential districts, changing them to a PDR Plan Development Residential District. At that meeting, there was a vote of denial, but, and there was a lot of evidence that was put on. The purpose of this meeting, there was a public hearing at the November 19th meeting that was closed. The purpose of this meeting is just pursuant to step six of 4.5 in the zoning resolution. There needs to be a recommendation that is issued to the Board of Trustees. Normally, if it's approved, most of the times, in cases where it's approved with the, I guess the proposed modifications staff, that's easy enough to go, those are addressed, and those are put into the resolution, or whatever is provided to the Board of Trustees with respect to the recommendation. In this case, when you voted to deny the proposed zone amendment with modifications, there wasn't a lot of discussion with respect to the rationale, and so, based on the evidence that was put in place, I've provided you all with a proposed resolution that would be presented to the Board of Trustees, so that they can go ahead and have their public hearing with respect to this request as well. The reason it had to be a special meeting is because pursuant to step six, it has to be done within 30 days of the hearing having occurred. So, again, thank you for your time. I guess what I, what I want to get from you guys is confirmation or clarification with respect to I either, either the proposed resolution is of denial as I've presented to you, and/or further clarification, or taking some things out. I want to understand from you what should be in the resolution of denial. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And with that being said, I guess we can move forward with respect to making a motion to adopt the resolution, having it seconded ideally, and then going into discussion where we can either adopt it as it is, and/or add or subtract whatever language you feel is proper.
Before we ask for a motion, commissioners, any questions or comments that you might have for Mr. Solman to clarify what he just explained to us?
Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the audience, it is a closed meeting, it's not open to the public. I guess, I think it might be beneficial just to read what the existing motion is. As Scott said, the point of this meeting is really to further clarify the reason that you all voted to make a recommendation to the trustees recommending the denial of the zone change. So, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to maybe just read that one piece of the resolution as it's currently written.
That would be...
I think it'll be beneficial to all you, the members of the board, just for your benefit. So, currently, the resolution states that the zoning commission of Corrine Township, Hamilton County, Ohio concludes and finds that the proposed requested zone change of parcel number 510-0013-0009 from R4 Suburban Medium Residential District and R6 Urban Residential District to PDR Plan Development Residential District, proposed as Abbey Town subdivision, would be detrimental to adjacent properties, and would be in conflict with the current zoning, land use plan, comprehensive plan, and the submitted preliminary development plan failed to satisfy Corrine Zoning Resolution Section 4.53 in weighing and contemplating the criteria set forth within for reviewing preliminary development plans. So, for your benefit, and for those who showed up tonight, just for your benefit, where the existing resolution stands.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, the question of the commissioners, any further questions of our staff before we ask for a motion?
I have one. You're saying we're voting on...
The resolution, now, I know, Mr. Ferring?
I did, because I...
You voted, and I understand that.
Yes.
So, obviously, the rationale that you would put in place wouldn't be included in, in the actual resolution.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, could we have a motion from one of the commissioners in relation to this matter?
I make a motion that we accept it as presented.
In, in doing that, can you please read the entirety of the, I guess, the name of the motion, or the resolution, I'm sorry.
Now, therefore be resolved...
No, I'm sorry, that, just the caption, all you need to read is the caption.
Resolution to deny the zone change from R4 Suburban Medium Residential District and R6 Urban Residential District to PDR Plan Development Residential District in accordance with the zoning resolution of Corrine Township, Ohio.
It needs a second.
That is the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion having been made and seconded, the floor is now open for the commissioners to discuss it, ask questions of staff, or ask questions of each other, or what have you.
So, this is a discussion on why we voted the way that we did, correct?
Exactly. If you're fine with the language you had presented, that's fine. If, I know you want to be more specific, I think the attorney for one of the residents referenced issues with the comprehensive plan that he presented, you know, you were handed the materials, if you want to make reference to those specific items, that's fine as well. I can go ahead and amend, you know, you can amend the motion as well.
Okay. Some of the issues that I had, first, the density of the properties, I felt that everything was shifted and reduced to try to get more houses onto the property, at the detriment of the houses around them. I liked the condition of the sidewalk, but I didn't feel that having that condition in there was going to be feasible with the setup of the road of Kemper.
Feasibility?
Also, the land use plan, another committee went through a lot of hours of developing that plan, and it just felt like there were areas that were being bypassed.
Okay. Okay. Duly noted, I can go ahead and include the density of properties in there, and I think your other concerns, I think, are addressed with the land use plan and feasibility aside, I can include that as well. Is there anybody else?
No, I'm fine with the language that you presented, plus...
Plus her addition.
What was just suggested.
Okay.
Any other?
Unless, unless there's any additional feedback.
I guess I'll throw a little bit out there of why I voted the way I did. I understand with the development, I do some development myself, and I've worked with housing for years, and, you know, like the density and the 20%, what we require, 20% green space, their density is, the housing part of that development is tighter, but they're giving up, you know, 30% of green space, and I understand the green space that they're giving up is hard to develop. But there's two sides to that too, you know, the township benefits a little bit too when you have, I believe it was 200 and some shorter feet of road, to maintain it, it's thrown back... 200 and some shorter feet of road to maintain it, gets thrown back at the taxpayer. So, if they do a good job with it, you know, the green space is, looks nice, I don't have a problem with it. This land was approved for, I believe, 70 some houses before this. It wasn't done back in 2008. So, we went from 72 to 68. Back then, Ryland could have came in and thrown in vinyl shacks that we had no jurisdiction over. With the PUD, or the, yeah, PUD, basically, we, we can govern a lot more of what goes in there. We want nice brick fronts, stone and stuff, and make the houses look nice. I know there are questions, you know, who's going to buy a $350,000 home over there? I don't think the developer would jump in that deep, not knowing that he could sell those. And those type of houses, this area, you either have $150,000 homes or $400,000 homes. There's not a whole lot in between. So, for the developer to do that, for the few houses there, there probably is a market for that. Would I hang my head out for that? Probably not. But if we're able to govern what they're building, then they can't say they're going to build, you know, $300,000 homes and go in and build a $200,000 home. I don't know if you have looked down here in Harrison along Dry Fork Road, New Haven Road, the development that's going in there, drive by there. That's what you could have there if they went by the straight zoning that they have today and blow right by us, go to, go to Hamilton County and shove a lot more houses in there and not have the 30% green space and, and all that bit. So, there's, there's, you know, two sides to that story. I know you have neighbors that, you know, I played on that land when I was a kid and hate to see it developed. You're going to see that everywhere. You know, that's progression. So, I don't know. I just feel that, and MI Homes does a pretty decent job. You can look at their other stuff that they build. So, I know there's some challenges with it. The sidewalks, you know, I'm not happy with the sidewalk. That's a challenge, and it may be, I believe, one of our staff mentioned where it would go down into the subdivision, you know, maybe a trail through there and back up at the corner. I did drive by and look at it, and that is a, you know, a tough situation here. But even to go across the street with it, you know, and then the busing issue with kids, there are not a whole lot of parents that use the buses for their kids anymore. So, I'm out in Ross, my shop out there, and I'm right next to Elda Elementary, and in the morning, the cars are lined up down the street to drop their kids off. So, you know, the busing issue, there's a lot, but I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
I just feel that we have a lot more jurisdiction under, under the PUD zoning, and it could be worse.
Fair enough. Anybody else?
Ms. Smith?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
And this will be, I'll go ahead and add the concerns Ms. McMullin talked about in addition to what has already been presented to the commissioner. Okay?
This is both that we're taking. This is not like...
This is just to say...
Or against, this is just for...
The resolution itself.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
All right. The motion passes, so you would...
I'll go ahead and make it amended, and I'll probably have for your signature ASAP, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Mr. Ione, any other business this evening?
That's all the business for this evening. I'd like to thank everybody for, again, coming out, and all the folks from the audience. Again, the point of this meeting was really just to make sure we locked up really tightly, you know, the recommendation that you all made to the board at the previous hearing. So, thank you all for coming out, and thank you all from the audience for coming out.
Could we have a motion for adjournment, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second, Lori? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The meeting has concluded about 6:15, 6:16. Thank you all for coming.